All right, welcome to City Hall. Tonight is January 5th, and here later on this week, the word five will be, or the number of five, will be a relatively warm number come about Wednesday night. Before we start tonight's meeting, we'll have a prayer led by Councilman Rick Mahalovich, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The origin of the word "January" means endings and beginnings. Therefore, for the end of 2014, let us pray for those people and organizations that have contributed to betterment of our community, some of which we will recognize here tonight. We stand on the shoulders of past leadership. So for the beginning of the new year, we pray for your guidance to make a positive contribution in our community for 2015. In your name, we pray.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Branch?
Here.
Costalis?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Hussey?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Scribner?
Here.
At this point in time, we have a quorum. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before we adopt the agenda, I would like to place Pending Bill 2014-100 on the informal calendar.
Okay. Any issue with that? How do you keep it off the informal calendar, Drew?
Either the sponsor takes it off, or six councilmen.
Okay. All right. No problems there, guys? All right, we'll just make that part of the agenda as amended, so to speak. Anything else, gentlemen? Or Laura, sorry. I said gentleman, I said aunt, or Laura. All right, guys, is there a motion approved?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion, seeing none, roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scribner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have nominations of candidates for the 4th Ward vacancy. Ralph Bray is-
Hold up, Mr. Mayor.
Recorder of deeds.
You say a 4th Ward, I believe, it's the 5th Ward.
I keep saying that, you know, when you're a 4th Ward guy for a long time.
I know.
So you're still in office.
Yes, sir.
All right. 5th Ward council vacancy. Mr. Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like, I'd move to suspend 12-8 of the city code and appoint Mr. Ron Madine to the 5th Ward vacant, to the vacant 5th Ward seat.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Drew, can you tell us what, just, people at home, what he just did by suspending that?
Sure. There's a code, 12-18 in the city code, which lays out a procedure for how vacancy could be filled or would be filled. However, the council does have the authority to set that aside if they like, and Councilman Henry just moved to suspend that ordinance, which just leaves it up to a vote, which is all that's required in the charter. And that would appoint Mr. Madine if he were elected today. It would require a majority of the council, and if elected, he would be seated tonight, and he is here. Phyllis would swear him in, and he would serve until April.
Okay. It's just one vote, right, since the suspension's already part of the motion?
Correct.
Okay. Roll call, please. That's a motion in favor, would be aye, obviously. Roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
No.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scribner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Looks like we have a winner. Mr. Madine, if you would please come forward, we will get you sworn in here, right, quick. Ron, how long were you on the council before?
Four years.
Four years.
Do you, Ron Madine, solemnly swear that you possess all the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of City Councilman of the City of Jefferson, that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Missouri, the provisions of the laws of the State of Missouri, the Charter of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, and all ordinances of the city, and will faithfully demean yourself in office?
I do.
Councilman?
Congratulations, Ron. (Applause). And Ron, just by chance, you got the same seat. I was wondering, I was wondering by chance if you were... See, already saving the taxpayers' dollars. All right, Ron, welcome. Any welcoming words?
I just appreciate the confidence of the council to appoint me to this short-term seat. I'll do my best to serve the city and the 5th Ward.
All right. Ron, welcome. Next, we'll go into miscellaneous items. We have a proclamation here tonight. Is Sarah Nichols, Angela Hirsch, or Darren Priest here? If you could please come forward to the podium. I'll read the proclamation, and then you can say a few words. Whereas Central Missouri Action, also known as CMCA, is a part of a national network of community action agencies founded in 1964. And whereas the mission of CMCA is to empower individuals and families to achieve self-reliance with the motto, with the motive of helping people changing lives. Whereas the City of Jefferson supports a vibrant community to enrich the lives of our citizens, we celebrate, along with CMCA, its 50th anniversary. Therefore, I, Eric J. Strump, Mayor of Jefferson City, to hereby proclaim January 12th as Central Missouri Community Action Day. Welcome.
Thank you.
My name is Darren Priest. I'm the executive director at Central Missouri Community Action. I can't thank you enough for this recognition and acknowledgement of the work that we do at Central Missouri Community Action. If I could, I'd like to share a copy of our most recent annual report for your reading pleasure and at your leisure. CMCA has been operating in Jefferson City for the last 50 years, and each of those years, each of those 50 years, we've spent several million dollars working to make this community strong and supporting your efforts, and the efforts of the school district, and the efforts of the faith-based community, and the efforts of the business community here in Jefferson City. We've been doing programs like Head Start and Early Head Start, which are our largest program. We've been working to put houses, roofs over people's heads. Sometimes we help people survive the cold winter by helping to pay part of their utility bills. We're helping to train people and place them in work and jobs that pay living wages. And ultimately, we're trying to help to create self-sufficiency. We want people to move out of poverty, off of public assistance, so that they can contribute back to the society as we are helping to train them to do. More recently, over just the last couple of years, we've been very supportive of your efforts to maintain public transit. We've been involved in financial education and budgeting classes here in Jefferson City. We have just recently, this past year, we've received an award from the Community Development Block Grant to help remove barriers to work for Jefferson City residents. And just last month, two months ago, we bought Cafe Via Roma just down the street as a social enterprise, as a way to both provide a training opportunity for some of our program participants, but also to try to generate some revenue to support our community activities. So we, again, appreciate your acknowledgement this evening, and we hope that you see us as part of the economic foundation of this community, and we hope to continue the great work and appreciate your partnership. If you want to say anything, Sarah or Angela.
Thank you all very much.
Guys, thanks for being here. Again, 50 years is a long time. Some of us hasn't, haven't seen 50, some of us have, but understand it's a long time. And thank you, guys, for being here, and I have a proclamation for you. Yes, sir. Larry? Go ahead.
I just want to, want to commend CMCA on their work in the community. They've been a huge asset for Jefferson City, and I've, working in the juvenile system, I directly worked with them, specifically when Ashley Varner was there, before she left. And so, so I just want to say thank you for your continued efforts and continued success. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Zon.
All right, guys, thanks again for being here. Appreciate it. No public hearings this evening, no appointments, presentations from staff. Mr. Lockwood, could you give us a brief update on the multipurpose building with Lincoln, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Not a lot to report since our last special meeting. Lincoln University has been on holiday break, and so we haven't had a chance to meet, to talk further about it. Our immediate objective is to continue working on the memorandum of understanding and working out the details on that.
Okay. Any questions for Bill? Bill, thank you, and especially thanks to your staff. I know they worked a lot of long hours with the Lincoln staff, trying to get everything together before Dr. Rome's deadline of the year, of the, end of the year, especially the council, too. Moving on, we have a resolution. Resolution 2014-29 honoring outgoing Cole County Presiding Commissioner Mark Ellinger. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? All right. All in favor, please say aye. Roll call. All in, or, roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Madine?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scribner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mark, if you could come forward, please. This is a resolution. It says, whereas the City Council Mayor wished to commend Mark Ellinger, who recently left the office of Presiding Commissioner, Cole County, Missouri, and whereas Mark was elected in 2006, and since that time has been an excellent advocate for the county residents, including those located in the city limits of Jefferson. And whereas during Mark's tenure, city-county relationships improved dramatically, and many of the most significant achievements of the past eight years have been a result of a strong partnership between the City of Jefferson and the County of Cole. Therefore, we hereby give Mark this resolution this evening. Mark, welcome. Give any words at all. I know you've spent eight years at the courthouse. We've had a lot of different issues over the last eight years. What, what are you the most proudest of as outgoing commissioner?
Well, I think what the resolution said is the most, most important thing we've done for the community, is a partnership together between the city and the county. Our two entities are inexorably and absolutely intertwined. We can't succeed apart from each other. We can only be together. And I've been fortunate through my tenure to work with two great mayors, a great city council, although lots of different people in the city council, a great county commission, all of whom were interested in working together, and I think that's what made our community a great place. I can promise you this, when I ran for office, I never figured I'd be standing here saying this today. So I just think we have great people in our community. Council's a testament to it. I'll pick on Ron, because he's a short timer. I mean, to come back to serve three months is a testament to how much people are willing to put into the community. You guys have great staff. Over the eight years, I've gotten to know a lot of them, worked with a lot of them. And I just think you all are fortunate to have great people that work for you, but more importantly, as a community, we're fortunate to have great people such as yourselves, such as the county commission, and all of our city and county employees that really devote their lives, their spare time, their work time, sleep time, all the time, to making this a better place to live. And I'm just pleased to have played a very small role in that.
Mark, thanks for being here. Any other comments from the council? Guy, I appreciate it a great deal.[823.82][823.82](Applause). Okay, no presentations tonight from the gallery. The consent agenda's the next item on our agenda. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Consent agenda. Consent agenda. Discussion on the consent agenda.
Yes.
Now, that's the motion on the floor. Yes, sir.
Item C, the agreement with the Chamber of Commerce. That's the renewal of the economic development contract, I do believe.
Okay.
I'd like to remove that from the consent agenda and put that as a separate item.
Okay. Is there another council person that would like to do the same? Per the city charter, it takes two council members to remove something from the consent agenda, the way it's printed. That seeing two, it will stand as printed. Discussion.
Have a discussion.
Yes, sir.
So that means that we can come back later on, after, it says year three or four, so this just binds us for another year.
Correct. I think if there's changes that you want to make as a council to that agreement, start that process sooner than-
Okay.
-later, so to speak, I guess.
Just wanted to clear that, thank you.
Right. Any more discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
You can voice vote that.
Oh, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
That's nine to one. Okay, bill's introduced. First reading of 2014-102.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Tow Pro LLC for towing and storage service of abandoned motor vehicles.
Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the last month or two, with the pending expiration of our contract for tow, we created a committee of five individuals, which represented our operations division, our traffic unit, our fiscal affairs technician, the sports services commander, and the purchasing agent for the City of Jefferson. Specifications were written. We had two competing businesses, and when all was said and done, to include a check with references, which we required that they provide, a facilities onsite assessment, it was a pretty clear decision that we believed Tow Pro was the preferential person or business with whom we would want to direct our toes. This includes those that are, toes that require, or that are, involve city-owned vehicles, and then, secondly, vehicles that are mostly directed toes by the police department. So I believe you have the bid tabulations, which reflect the clear choice, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions on Bill 102? Bob?
Chief, would you refresh my memory? This is a new contract, right? Tow Pro has, has done kind of like backup towing for us in the past, but they would be the primary tower now? Or have they towed as a primary tower in the past?
Yes, they were the recipient the last time we solicited bids, and I'm told they had an exceptional track record. That's kind of a quote from the sports services captain, so that played into the grades that they received.
Okay. I, sometimes I have a little trouble hearing you, because you kind of tend to speak softly, compared to my ears, at least. So I wasn't sure if you said that they had been or not.
Yeah, besides the excellent track record, they were going to pay us $7,601 a year for that, for providing that service, and so that also made some difference in the decision.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on 102? Seeing none, we have first reading of 2014-103.
An ordinance amending the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, to allow the holder of a state-issued liquor license located outside of the city to obtain a temporary sales permit for special events.
Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We think this is just a little bit of cleanup. Temporary alcohol permits are issued to business owners who have a liquor license in, within the city limits and want to operate at a different location, so basically for special events, carnivals and such. But we don't have any actual mechanism that allows out-of-state, or people without a city license, so anyone from out of town to come in and also participate in those. We've accommodated them different ways, but we like to do the cleanup code to actually allow that. So this would, this would just change to allow anyone with a, with a state liquor license can also come in and get a temporary license to serve at a given location. In addition, the bill extends the time of the permit from seven days, to seven days from, I think it's three, and just to accommodate some of our bigger events. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Drew? On 103. Rick, Bob? Rick?
The temporary permit shall include the sale of intoxicating liquor in original packages. It would allow businesses, it wouldn't necessarily have to be served out of a tap, but could be served in the, you know, can form or bottle form, if permitted.
Bob?
But it wouldn't allow, like, alcohol by the drink? Is that what you're saying?
No, it would. It would do both. Right now, it has to be, right now, it has to be by the drink. This would just allow direct sales of, of a can or a bottle, although most places, bottles are prohibited.
Okay. Any other questions on 103?
Jeremy just mentioned to me, worked on this, that that's specifically been clarified in the parent statute that we mimicked.
Okay. Any other questions on 103? Drew, I have a question. Where, where would you see this being used at?
Well, we use them actually a lot. Any type of events where people bring in someone to cater, and of course, carnivals are a big one as well. We don't, this would not apply to the festival districts, because they've got a whole separate set of rules. So if they're looking for a festival district selling on the street, those are actually covered under the festival district ordinance. The business, catering, the big event parties, and Taste of Jefferson City, that's a good one.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on 103? All right, moving on, we have first reading of 2014-104.
An ordinance approving an amendment to urban renewal plan for Progress Urban Renewal Project Number Missouri R-45, Urban Renewal Plan Amended 1997.
Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was a request from a housing authority, and their attorney, Jack Plitzus, here as well, if you need any technical questions about the urban renewal plan. But essentially, the urban renewal plan, it talks about how land owned by the housing authority will be utilized, and current, this ties back to our, the purchase of the parking lot on Broadway and McCarty. Right now, there, the urban renewal plan says it can be sold to a developer, and this, this is a minor amendment to say it can be sold to the City of Jefferson for a conference center or other public purposes. I think that's about it. And I got the nod that it sounded okay, so I guess it's, would, happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of the, the nuts and bolts of it.
Wonder what a nod costs nowadays. A little extra.
He can charge that nod to Alan Pollock.
Any questions of Drew or staff on 104? All right, moving on, we'll go into bills pending. We have a third reading of 2014-98.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Meco Engineering Company Incorporated in the amount of $78,500 for the Jefferson City Police Station HVAC design project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this is a design contract for the police HVAC contract. It will replace their current system, which is outdated, obsolete, lacks parts, various, various issues over there. Public Works is actually administering it on their behalf. The cost of it was $78,500. And what's the system design, of course, and then there'll be a bid process where we go out to bid for this project. And right now, the estimates for construction are approximately $1 million. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on 98? Seeing none, discussion. Roll call, please.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Madine?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scribner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have third reading of 2014-99.
An ordinance amending Chapter 12 Elections of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, pertaining to the form for nomination of candidates.
Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was a slight tweak this year of the nomination of candidates form, and it happens occasionally from the state, or the state, the state's requirements for the nomination of candidates. And rather than come back and, every time there's a small tweak and ask for an amendment to the code, we thought maybe it would be best to allow the clerk to make a form that's consistent with, compliant with all requirements of the code, charter, and state law, and that's what this ordinance would, would do.
Okay. Any questions, Drew, on 99? Seeing none, discussion. Roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Madine?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scribner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Okay. Number 100's been placed on the informal calendar earlier by the sponsor, Councilman Henry. Next, we have third reading of 2014-101.
An ordinance amending the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, by deleting references to the Clean Energy District.
Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city was tapped some years ago, probably in the first Madine era, to create the Clean Energy Board, and since that time, it's actually a creation of state statute, but it spun off to be its own creation, and they serve as statewide groups. So in order to avoid kind of the confusion that's come up occasionally, whether we keep minutes and whether we're the appointers of the code, we just, Phyllis and I discussed it and thought we'd suggest basically eliminating that from the code. It doesn't disband the Clean Energy Board, the district, they continue to exist and move forward. It's just to avoid, really clarify, to clarify to the citizenry that it's not really our board. So it deletes it from the code.
Any questions on, on cleaning that up on 101? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Madine?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scribner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Madine?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scribner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Madine?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Madine?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.